It is exactly 6:30, and so I'm wanting now to welcome you all to this mayor forum. I'm Bruce Lyon, and my wife and I do lots of these. We've been to Villarica more times than I can count to do forums of various kinds. So I'm happy to be here tonight and glad to see all of you here tonight as well. Ordinarily, our past president, Robin Collins, would be here on behalf of the League to extend a greeting to you, but she has absconded to the beach with her husband for a week, and so she's leaving it on our own, leaving us on our own. Can you still hear me with this down a little bit?
Yeah, better.
Okay, good. I'll try to remember where to hold it. I tried tacking it onto my tie, and that wasn't working so well, so we'll try this. For openers about the League, we have a table full of material out here, and we welcome you to please pick up anything that's of interest to you. There's a description of our Monday night programs we do, or there may be some information out there about the Monday evening programs. That's when the League typically sponsors its activities. There are some political directories like this here that will give you a listing of all the candidates, all the current office holders in the county, and there are, I believe, some state offices, yep, state offices and congressional offices listed too. So pick up a copy of this on your way out for your complete up-to-date listing that the League puts out every year. And if you are interested in more information about the League or possibly signing up to join the Carrollton, Carroll County League, there is an email listing out there, and we'd be happy to have your address. No obligation, we'll be glad to send you information, and you can decide at that point the extent to which you might like to be involved. I'd like to introduce our candidates. First of all, you can see their nameplates, but still, we'll call them by name anyway. On my immediate left, Dominique Conte. Next to her would be Michael Nicholas Day, and then on the very end, Gil McDougall. We had them separated at their request because nobody wanted to be presumptuous enough to sit in the mayor's chair. So that's why we stuck Gil over there all by himself. Our substitute CEO tonight is Jennifer Dennecker, and she is back in the back there, and she will be one of the League members available here tonight to pick up your questions. We do welcome additional questions. We've gotten quite a few from you already this evening. My co-moderator is, as always, my wife, Kathy Lyon, who is in charge of vetting these questions and trying to keep them organized, eliminate duplication, and in many ways, keep me straight this evening. Our timekeeper will be Jennifer's husband, Walter, Walter Dennecker, and he has a computer screen. We've gone high-tech with Walter, and he will signal the candidates at various points along the way as to how much time they have remaining. A little bit about the ground rules. We are asking the candidates to give opening statements of not more than two minutes and closing statements of the same length. They will have two minutes also to answer questions, which we have solicited from a lot of people, including members of the League of Women Voters. And as I've already indicated, you're invited to submit written questions also this evening and just pass them to the League members, and they'll give them to Kathy. We are not going to be able to answer all the questions, so if your question is not answered, it's not because it wasn't any good, it's because we just didn't have time to get to it this evening. So we will have to restrict them to those that pertain directly to the business of the Commission. Because of our commitment to nonpartisanship, we do ask that the audience refrain from parting or demonstrating support in other ways, and we also ask that you carry your cellphones, if you will, put them on, vibrate, keep from interrupting the forum this evening. I have to remind myself of that each time as well. We're happy to have the media here, as always. Star News is here, there's Sue Horn, and The Times Georgian, Ken Denny, is sitting up here on the front row. I think that covers those folks. We also are pleased to be live streaming as we speak on your website, the city website. So we are cranked up and going live on that. I think that's all of the preliminary stuff that we need to go through, and so we'll begin with the opening statements, and they have drawn, yes, sir. Question?
Not a question, just a request.
Yeah.
Can we do the pledge of allegiance before we start?
Sure. Let's rise and do that in the corner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Dominique has drawn the first opening statement. We'll go in order to the left after that, winding up with Gil, and at the conclusion of the forum this evening, Gil will give the first closing statement, and we'll reverse the order at that point, go to his right, and wind up with Dominique in last place at that point. So Dominique, if you would go ahead, please, with your statement.
The city of Villarica deserves a leader with extensive experience in educational leadership, diversity leadership, military leadership, and community-based leadership, providing a broad spectrum of understanding to ensure council decisions reflect the entire community. In addition, it deserves a leader who has vast experience in collaborating and working as part of a team whose goals and outcomes are beneficial and fruitful for our community as a whole, along with asking the tough questions at council and being a voice for the community. Your leader should be transparent, thoughtful, and honest with any decision-making process put forth. I have served my country with honorably, and now I want to serve the city I call home with the same distinction.
First and foremost, I want to thank the League of Women Voters of Carrollton.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
I have nothing.
Ah, there we go. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of Carrollton and Carroll County for having us all out here today. We really appreciate giving us a chance to come out and talk to all of you guys. My name is Michael Day. My wife, Lindsay Day, is a special needs elementary education teacher. My son, Will Day, is in eighth grade at Mason Creek Middle School. We moved out here from Fishers, Indiana about 11 years ago. We love this city. We moved out here because it reminds us of home. It reminds us of the small hometown feel that we grew up in. I grew up with farm fields all around me. You knew every neighbor. Doors were unlocked. You could go anywhere and everywhere and know people, see them, wave hi, and they'd smile back. That's what I love about Villarica. I went to college at Ball State University for my undergrad in management. I also attended Southern New England School of Law for two and a half years. I work at Heritage Crystal Clean. It's listed under HCCI, under the NASDAQ. We deal in oil and haz waste and non-haz waste. I actually, I run the operations for the southeast of the country. I deal with everything operationally from Raleigh, North Carolina, over to Nashville, down to Birmingham, down to Mobile, and across all of Florida and all of Georgia. I make important decisions every single day. I make decisions every day that affect thousands of people. I want to make sure Villarica is the best hometown that it's been. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum tonight, and I want to thank all of you here and those watching at home. My name is Gil McDougall, but I know many of you remember me by my nickname, Butch McDougall. After high school, I went to West Georgia College, and there, my instructors started calling me Gilbert, and I decided I liked that even less than Butch, so I asked them to start calling me Gil, and it stuck. I grew up here in Villarica. Many of you may not know that we lived in the housing projects when I was a kid, that I was adopted, that I lost both parents by the time I was 18, or that I was homeless for a period of time after that. I faced tough challenges in my life, but I always found a way to overcome. My mother died when I was still in high school. My most vivid memory from school is one where a particular teacher approached me and asked me to come and live with their family. I declined that offer, but that gesture of kindness impacted my view of this city and its generosity forever. I chose to raise my family here, three boys and three dogs. I'm a father, a business owner, and a foster parent. We've opened our home to literally hundreds of foster children over the years, and I am proud of the positive impact we have had on those kids. Running for mayor for me is about continuing to give back to a community that has given so much to me and my family, but it's also about duty, responsibility, and maintaining a steady course of action. I have spent the last three years on the city council focused on responsible solutions to the most pressing issues facing our city. I want to continue that work as our next mayor. I have the leadership, experience, and commitment to keep this city moving. A motto I have led by comes from Albert Einstein. We cannot solve our problems using the same logic we used when we created them. I look forward to your questions tonight. Thank you.
Here's the first question, and this one comes from the audience. Over the past three years, how have you participated in city activities such as city council meetings, citizen input sessions, volunteer boards, or committees? And Michael, you would be the first to respond to this, please.
Thank you. Past three years, I have been first vice chair of the Douglas County Republican Party. I've been to many council meetings. I've visited our website to watch many of the council meetings. I have not been a part of any of the boards. We need to make a change. We need to make a change now to make this city better. What I've seen in the boards is not what we need. I've seen the boards, the city council neglect listening to us, the voters. I've seen the city council raise our taxes, raise our water bills the past three years. I'm upset. I'm angry about it. I know there's people out there that are just as angry as I am, and when I'm mayor, I will stop that. Thank you.
So for the past three years, I've sat on those boards. I've sat in this room, and I've been to hundreds of meetings. I've talked to many constituents across this city and across my ward. Every issue that comes before this council, we discuss it with the public, we invite the public here, and we advertise it. We put out an agenda, but I'm at those meetings. Not only that, I've participated and been at training sessions all across the state to help better understand our infrastructure needs and how to better them. So all of that is interesting to me, but I have to tell you, I've been in here doing it for three years. Thank you.
Respectfully, former council McDougall, you're correct. You have been here for three years and participating with other councils to work toward the community. However, it does no good if the transparency is not there where the bulk of the community is not, or doesn't have the luxury of the time to attend the council meetings. Transparency is everything. If we're watching it on Villarica TV or perhaps on a different livestream, some of, as you stated before, where you grew up in the inner city or in an urban society, don't have Wi-Fi, so they don't have the luxury to watch what you're being told. So the lack of communication throughout the community is disturbing, that the council has been doing. As far as answering your question pertaining what I have done to participate in the community, I am part of the Order of Eastern Star here in the West Georgia area. We have helped with the homeless in the Douglas County vicinity in particular, as well as with veterans, along with participating with women in battered shelter communities. I have been doing this. I have been a star for over four years. That is part of our duty, and our Masonic Order is to help all of the individuals in need. I have been providing community service before I decided to run for mayor. I've also been a mother and a parent, providing for my children, making sure that they come first, because family comes first in my environments. I made sure that my oldest son is attending college at the University of Kentucky. He is a sophomore this year. I am a single parent, divorced parent, so that is my first responsibility. However, I have been watching and listening to my neighbors, to my community pertaining to the lack of communication with our council, the lack of communication with our municipal government, and the community not being aware of what they need to know.
I'd like to thank you all for your responses to that initial question. Here's another one from the audience. It is, what do you believe the top issues are in Villarica? And Gil, you would be the first one to respond to this, please.
So the most pressing issues that I see in Villarica are our infrastructure needs with regard to our water and sewer. It's also around growth. We're going to have to be able to grow our way out of the issues that we have with water and sewer. The city council has been hard at work for three years putting together a plan. We commissioned a study to understand how best to approach meeting the infrastructure needs, and then we implemented that plan. So we are starting to see some of the fruits of what we've done. I know it's been harder on more people, but we've done everything that we possibly know, and we're always open to suggestions for how we can better communicate with our citizens and make them aware of what's going on. Anybody who chooses to can find a way to get in touch with any of us through phone calls or emails, or they can go by City Hall. There's a lot of ways to get in touch with your city council members, but your city staff as well. But those are the most pressing issues, and we are hard at work at them. While I say we are, I resigned, but when I get back, we'll continue the work we've been doing.
Okay, and Dominique, you would be next, please.
I agree. The lack of infrastructure is impertinent for our community. Right now, we are in a water and sewer crisis. The water system is broken. We need a whole host of ideas to come up with a solution to fix our water and sewer issue, and taxing us to death as property owners, as myself, isn't the solution. Also, I'm concerned about population growth. Last week, when we had our last city council meeting, the city manager informed the community that basically by 2025, we need additional 2,100 new residents here in the city of Villarica, or our taxes will go up pertaining to the water and sewer. That is a major concern, population growth here in this beautiful city. We have to continue to grow, but we cannot continue to grow if we're lacking the welcoming of diversity in this community. This community is unique. We are half Carroll and half Douglas, yet we don't reflect that. I live on the Douglas side, and my community and my neighbors consistently complain and vent that they feel that their needs, their wants, their desires are not being heard by a local municipal government, and that is a problem. And additionally, the lack of diversity in our government is a concern. Villarica is 38% African-American, 12% Hispanic, yet that does not display or represent our local government. How could we be a united city if our local government isn't united? If half of the county feel like they're not being represented? If half of our demographic feel like their voices aren't being heard? Villarica is supposed to represent everyone. We are united as Carroll and Douglas as one.
All right. And Michael, you would wrap things up on this question, please.
Thank you. All I'm hearing is that we need to grow, grow, grow. I moved to Villarica with my family to keep it a small hometown feel. Growing is unacceptable. If you want a big hometown, Douglasville is right over there, Carrollton is right over there. What we have problems with is our water issues, our taxes being too high. That is our biggest issue. I've actually went ahead and pulled an open records request, looking back three years, three years on our capital expenditures. It totals roughly about $8 million. Now, I only got this about noon today, so I'm still going to go through it, and I will be more than happy to share it with anybody here. There's differences. We have wants and we have needs. Needs we definitely need to take care of. Water issue is number one. Wants, we need to push back and keep our taxes, either maintain them or reduce them. And I know there's at least $8 million. I'm going to look through this and let everybody know how we can save money to not raise taxes. Thank you.
All right, folks, and unfortunately, there's no time for rebuttal to these questions. We just have to take them one at a time here and move on to the next one. You all have alluded to infrastructure problems, and so here's a specific question. The city council recently passed a budget which included rate increases to fund new infrastructure. What is your opinion of the water sewer plan and the rate increases that will finance it? And Dominique, you would be the first to respond to this, please.
As I stated earlier, we cannot tax our way out of this situation. It is going to cost hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars to reinvert our water system that is in dire straits. There has to be a whole host and multitude of suggestions and ideas coming from our community and local government for us to get this resolved. As I stated when I've met with others, I don't want us to become a Flint crisis. No, we're not in the same category, but it started with the water system and their pipes. That's how it started, and yet five years later, they're still drinking out of bottled water in the United States of America. We still have a state, a city, that is still drinking bottled water. So that is a major concern to me, is the water and sewer getting some type of fix where we're not taxed to death. One suggestion I would suggest is that we actually develop and reconstruct another wastewater plant. We have to. If we're going to tax for frivolous things, in my opinion, one of those things that we move forward with is developing additional pipes. Those pipes have been infrastructure since the early 1900s, from what we've been told. Our city manager have told us just over a couple of weeks ago that there was an additional 100 or so manholes that were just discovered that we had no record of. Thank goodness, most of them are still in good standing, but that's not a guarantee as we continue to move on with this investigation pertaining to the water and sewer, what we're going to encounter. As a homeowner, I cannot even fathom the thought of continually our water bills continuously rising to try to tax our way out of a non-resolved situation. There has to be additional resolutions, and we should bring everybody to the table. It should be all hands on deck, all ideas. No idea is too absurd at this point.
Okay, and Michael?
Water is a huge issue for us. We have bottled water up here. I drink out of the same faucet that you guys do, the same water that you guys do. I know that, you know, the black gunk in the toilets that show up every week, we're all drinking the same. Something has to be fixed. The city manager said just to fix what we have is $15.5 million. We need to go back and make sure we change wants and needs. We've always got to go back to that. Need is the water, definitely. Wants, we can push back to make sure we fix the water. The water plant itself, I believe if I'm stating this correctly, would be another $5 to $7 million on top of it. If we're going to grow our way out of it and tax ourselves $15.5 million more when we already know that it's taken three years just to find issues that we're still finding today, that's not an acceptable answer. I know that we have built our capital, they have used our funds, our taxes, to make sure they get out of the deficit. Currently, I believe there's about $577,000 sitting in the account. While we have fixed incomes in our city, our neighbors, my neighbor is on a fixed income, and his water bill went up from $70 to $180 this last month in the past three years. It's ridiculous. It needs to stop. Thank you.
I don't even know where to begin with that. Let me say this. The water that you drink, the water that comes through your tap, is safe. It is perfectly safe. Let me say also, the wastewater plant is only half-used on the west side. If we're not building another wastewater plant, that's the reason we have to grow. Not growing is unacceptable. It's not even possible. We have to find a way to pay that plant off. And let me say this about the rate increases. Every year that we increase those water and sewer rates, we're based on a study, based on what it would take to fix the problems that had been going on for years and years, and we lowered the tax rate every year. And what we did was we shifted the burden off of the back of the property taxpayer and put it back onto the user of the water and the sewer. Those who use more, pay more. That's what happened. I'm sorry, I just get frustrated, because what happens is you don't know the facts because you don't come to the meetings. You have no clue what's going on, and you're talking about, I don't want to pay more rates. Neither do I. I pay the same rates everybody pays. So I'm sorry, it's just a little frustrating to hear this kind of information. We work really hard to make sure that people are well-informed. We do everything we can. We'll take as many suggestions as we can. We want you to be informed. We want you to understand what's going on out there, but any idea that our water's not safe is bogus. It's not even possible. Thank you.
Not to prolong the discussion of this issue, but I will ask one more water-related question, and Michael, this will come to you first to respond to, but this question really is directed at one candidate in particular, but I don't ask questions of one that the other two are not also asked to respond to. The questioner has referred to a comparison that one of the candidates supposedly made to the problems of Flint, Michigan, where contamination due to negligence on the part of city officials exposed thousands of residents to high levels of lead and may have been responsible for 12 deaths attributable to those. Can you explain your comparison? And Michael, as I said, you would be the first to respond to this question.
I don't know any of the information from Flint, Michigan. I've got no response.
All right, and Gil, would you respond?
Well, there really is no comparison, so it's hard to respond. Let me talk about just a little bit. Flint, Michigan, they had poisoned lead in their water. People were dying over there. We've had nothing like that. What we're talking about is neglected infrastructure. We're talking about pipes in the ground that are mis-sized because of poor planning that went on years ago. That's part of what we're doing now. That's part of the plan that we're putting together. We've got areas where we needed to have a 12-inch pipe, and we've got 4-inch pipe or 6-inch pipe, or in some cases, it's been molded together, welded together, where it shouldn't have been, but it was an immediate fix to accommodate some development at the time. It was years and years ago, but it's stuff that we're working on. There is no comparison to Flint, Michigan. That's silly.
Okay, and Dominique?
Respectfully, Council McDougall, the relevance of it is the water and sewer. It started, if you don't know Mr. Day, pertaining to the situation with Flint, by their pipes being old, and then it escalated over time to the poison of the individuals. So it started basically on foundation, on the infrastructure of the water and sewer pipes being too old and rotted, as ours are. The comparison is where we are as the beginning of a foundation. Obviously, as I stated earlier, we are nowhere in the nearest of poisoning our citizens. How would we be naive as citizens of this town to not realize that it started on a foundation of the infrastructure with the pipes not being suitable, not being replaced, not creating another waste plant, not addressing the issue, not informing the community and the neighbors that lived in that area? So as the government grew, unfortunately, and as growth grew, there was no restructure of the pipes, which led to the lead poisoning and so on, as we know of what Flint is now, where individuals are drinking out of where individuals are drinking out of water bottles half of the community there. So to answer the question, the relevance is if we do not get our water and sewer, as far as the pipe, the aging pipes that are over a hundred years old replaced, it could eventually lead to that. That was my comparison. It was not the state that right now we are in dire straits of being poisoned. The concern is the infrastructure of the pipes, the decay of the pipes. The pipe's been over a hundred years old. That is the relevance, that is the comparison.
Okay, thank you to all of you. Let's move on to a different category, a different subject. The same city council budget that I referred to earlier included salary increases intended to help retain experienced staff, according to this newspaper report. What additional measures may have to be taken to recruit and retain city employees, and what categories of employees are particularly in need of salary increases? Gil, you be first, please.
Thank you. So when I first got elected to the council, can y'all hear me? That's not normally an issue. When I first got elected to the council, they, the city staff had been working on a pay parity study, and the council authorized that study to go forward. So what you see happening in this third budget is the third phase of implementation of that salary study. What we looked at was surrounding cities of our size and tried to make our wages competitive. We didn't try to make them, you know, really high to attract people, we tried to make them competitive. And one of the areas that we had to focus on the most was in public safety, and that's where the bulk of the money went, and that's also where the bulk of the money went in this third phase. There probably are more things that we can do, but we have taken other steps. We've gone to a partially self-funded health insurance program, which has saved, I think it's about one million thirty-five thousand dollars in insurance premiums that we would have paid had we not gone to this program, but it's better for our employees. Our employees now have a zero co-pay when they go see their doctor, they have a fifteen-dollar co-pay when they see their specialist. We've been able to reduce deductibles, all while saving the city, like I said, about a million thirty-five thousand dollars. So there probably are more things that we can do, but we have done a lot, and we will look at every way we can to retain, to hire and retain the best employees possible. Thank you.
I'm in support of employees, city employees, receiving a pay increase, if you will. So what they're getting paid for reflects the job that they do. No job is easy, and in the city and the state of Georgia, we are one of the lowest income as far as what we pay our individuals here. If you do the math comparing what we pay as a state for the same occupation to, let's say, someone in a different state, particularly up north or on the west coast, we do get paid less in general. So I'm always supportive of making sure that there is fair pay, if you will, in the occupation that you may have a specialty in. So I do support as council. Hello? So I do support as council, former Council McDougal has stated, it is a wise and a just reason to increase the pay of the city's current employees. They work hard, and their pay should reflect their merits, if you will.
Leaders don't give yourself a two-hundred percent pay raise while all the other employees get a one-point-five percent pay raise. Leaders don't do that. The mayor and city council did. I understand how hard it is to retain employees. We actually just bumped up our base pay up to fifteen dollars and fifty cents starting. We did it over a couple bumps, over about a year and a half. The economy is great. You can go anywhere and find a job right now, and everybody knows it. So to find the good employees and to keep the employees that you've already trained takes money, period. But two-hundred percent pay raise for the mayor and city council while every other employee gets a one-point-five percent bump, that's unacceptable. Thank you.
All right. Dominique, you would be the first for this next question. Please describe your position on growth as it relates to each of the following: residential, commercial, and industrial, and how do you view the mayor's role in each of these categories? Yep?
Okay, as I stated a little earlier, growth is extremely important. As I had mentioned, we just found out at the last city council meeting that we need an additional twenty-one hundred new residents to reside in the city of Villarica by 2025 or our water and sewer taxes will increase. Again, we'll probably go through another phase of that, if you will. That being said, demographically, growth is important, and to attract the diverse demographics that we need residentially, we need to not just build homes, but we need to increase retail, a whole host of different type of culturally diverse restaurants, recreational facilities. There is times where our community have to pretty much spend their hard-earned money going to local cities as far as Douglasville or Hare for recreation. If you want to go to the movies, you have to go to Douglasville. If you want to go to the bowling, you have to go to Douglasville. If you want to go to Big Air, you go to Hare. We don't have Andretti, you go to Cobb County. We don't have anything as far as a multitude of recreational facilities for our community. There's over fifteen thousand residents here in Villarica. We can subsidize and pay and put our hard-earned money back into our own city instead of giving it to our local communities, if you will, to enjoy ourselves recreationally-wise, as well as retail stores. It wouldn't hurt to have, if you will, Kmart or a local Marshalls or Ross or something of that nature. As far as industrial, we definitely need more, more industrial facilities around that would help also with our hiring employment as well, whether it's more industries as far as distribution companies or what have you, that would help bring in employment to our particular city, which we desperately need instead of commuting back and forth to Atlanta.
And Michael.
Growth is not what we need. It's not what we want. We want the small hometown feel. With growth comes traffic. Roads are already backed up as they are. Commercial, industrial, residential, all brings problems. We have Atlanta growing out as fast as it can right now because it is a mess down there, and we have a perfect place to live as it is right now. There is going to be growth. Everybody wants the same hometown feel that we have. I get that. There's always going to be some growth. It has to be managed, I'm the one to manage it right. When I grew up in Fishers, Indiana, back in two thou, I'm sorry, back in nineteen ninety, there was seven thousand five hundred people in the city. In the year two thousand, they increased up to forty-five thousand people. That's an increase, what, thirty-three thousand people in ten years? I'm not saying that, you know, Villarica's going to grow that big that quick, but I've seen it. I've lived through it. I know how much of a mess it can be, and if you want that down your streets and you want to grow like that, that's not, that's not who I am. That's not what I want for the city. There's a way to do it. I grew up in it, I know how to do it. I was born and raised in Fishers, Indiana. If you look back in Money Magazine in two thousand seventeen, Fishers, Indiana was the number one best city to live in in the nation. I know how to get us there. Thank you.
The question about growth, that ship has sailed. The city is going to have to grow, or you're going to go and find a way to pay for all this infrastructure that is necessary. So there are different ways we can grow, though. We can focus on residential, we can focus on commercial or industrial. The best way to combat the cost overruns that we have on our infrastructure is going to be through an additional industrial park. We've been working on that, I'm a big supporter of it, and every industrial business that we can bring in would accommodate a cost savings equal to about three hundred homes. So to me, that's where we need to focus, is on our industrial growth, but our commercial growth is important, too. And for each of those businesses we can bring online, that would accommodate about fifty homes in equal numbers. And then residential, those are on a per-home basis, but we need to continue to even grow our residential, and we'll continue to do that. All through this city, there are undeveloped lots and developed lots that are still standing, but our growth residentially has increased dramatically. We've gone from about seventy-seven permits in two thousand sixteen to over three hundred just so far this year. So we're doing some good things, but every time we add somebody onto our infrastructure, it reduces the cost that you have to pay in order to fund that. So we're going to continue to grow, but how we do it and that we do it responsibly matters, and that's what I'll offer. Thank you.
All right. In relation to that growth, this person wants to know if the city should be encouraging starter home communities in Villarica. And Michael, would you start on this one, please, for us?
I love this city. We love this city. We wouldn't live here if we didn't. We know there's going to be some growth. Starter home facilities, throwing them up left and right, three hundred homes, you know. We just had fourteen homes built on our street that we live on, my wife and I and my son, just this last year. They literally overnight went up. We can't allow one starter home facility turn into two, turn into five, turn into ten, turn into fifteen. It will increase our traffic, it will increase, you know, going to the grocery store, waiting in line at Publix. It's, we have a hard enough time right now filling the vacancies in our downtown. Building more homes out here is not the answer. Thank you.
So the street you live on were undeveloped lots that had been platted out years and years ago, and they needed to be developed. Several of y'all live in communities that had vacant lots that were being overgrown, and now they've been developed into homes. Those weren't starter homes either. Now, we don't have a lot of space left in Villarica for residential developments, so the chances of us having many more starter homes is not that good anyway. But it is true that when you take a look from a governmental standpoint about the tax base, you need higher-value homes in order to offset the cost for everybody else because somebody has to pay for all of the infrastructure and the safety and all of the governmental needs. So while we may not have room for starter homes, for the homes that we do have room for, we need to develop those, and I'm going to continue to push for that growth. Thank you.
As far as starter homes are concerned, I think that should be managed growth, if you will, but I will never decline continuous growth for our community because of the fact that we were presented with our city manager who we have entrusted to guide us through any type of deficit or debt that we may face as a city. He informed us a couple of weeks ago, if we do not grow by at least twenty-one hundred new residents by 2025, our taxes will go up. That is a fact. With that, of course, it has to be managed growth, but I will never deny anyone who wants to be a resident, a property homeowner in our beautiful city. I welcome that. I welcome the diversity, I welcome, obviously, their property tax income, anything that will help us sufficiently decrease our taxes, our tariffs, as well as increase the assistance with our water and sewer enterprise fund that we need. It is imperative that we continue to build on our infrastructure, and to do that, one of the ways, of course, it's not a magnificent, significant way, Council, former Council McDougal's right, we do need to focus on the commercial and industrial. That is going to bring in the bulk, hopefully, of our additional income that we need for the water and sewer infrastructure that City of Villarica need. But I'm not going to deny the fact of us embracing diversity and continuous different types of residents that want to make and find Villarica a suitable, welcoming, loving town.
All right. Gil, this one would come to you first. What is your position on the city's ability to generate revenue to improve infrastructure and make necessary improvements in the city of Villarica through Carroll County and Douglas County special purpose local option sales tax referendums? That's the SPOST referendums, state and federal grants, bond referendums, and so forth.
So thank you for that question, and that reminds me of a point that came up earlier about the eight million dollars in capital requests. When you work within the government, you will figure out pretty quickly that a lot of money comes in through these programs, these grant programs and SPOST programs, but they show up in your budget, in our budget, every year as expenditures or capital requests. So in many cases, that money has already been earmarked through a SPOST because SPOST designates how that money will be spent before the taxpayers are asked to vote on it. So in many ways, we don't even get to decide the particulars about how that money is spent. I support all of those programs, and we use all of those programs. We will, when the SPOST money came in from Douglas County, the Douglas County side got six million dollars in SPOST money, but it was designated, and we had citizen groups that were put together to work on it. Several of those members are here tonight. They decided how that money would be spent, and then it came back to the council, who then adopted what they had requested. We also, we also apply for grants on a regular basis. Anytime there's grant money available for us, the CDBG projects that pay for a lot of our infrastructure repairs and upgrades come through grants, so I support those as well. All of those programs are good programs, but more importantly, they go to the public for the public to vote on before we get that money. Thank you.
I think it's vital that we continue to have the SPOST program. Again, as what former Council McDougal stated, that is important, that helps us on the Douglas as well as the Carroll side to subsidize anything that our particular town needs. As you know, it's diverse because we're half of both counties. I, again, request that we need additional retail industries here. That would help as well bring in additional money. A lot of our money, we use for different locations, for the things that could be built right here in our own town. We should not have to go the county over to pretty much give our tax money away when we need it in our own city. We are growing, the genie is out of the bottle, there's no turning back. We are going to continue to grow. The question is, are we going to be able to evolve to meet the need of our demographic population? And at this moment, I do not feel respectfully that we are. We have to catch up. The census is coming out, you will see that we are steadily increasing. This is not an annex, we are increasing, which is a positive thing because I stated earlier, we need to increase by at least twenty-one hundred new residents by 2025 or we're going to pay more taxes. That is the bottom line. So I support anything that will help increase our funding to make that happen, where we do not have to increase our taxes. As we know, we are working harder and getting paid less. I don't know about you, but I welcome a standard growth of demographic population. Of course, it could be controlled to a certain degree, but we cannot put our head in the sand and act as though our town isn't growing and that our taxes aren't going up. We have a city manager who we entrusted, who has made it clear, our taxes will go up in 2025 if we do not get twenty-one hundred new residents. Thank you.
I was the one that did the open records request. I have it all here. I just received it at noon today. We will go through it. There are wants and needs in- There are wants and needs in here. There are some stuff that we can get rid of, that they should not have brought to begin with, not get rid of, but there's, there's items that we could've saved on. Once, we don't, we need to push back. Needs, we have to take care of first, our water issues. Now, whether we use SPOST grants, every opportunity we can to raise money is definitely something we have to look at, and definitely we have to do. If we haven't done enough in the last three years, that's, that's, that's guaranteed. SPOST is definitely, thank you for the definition of SPOST, by the way, you know, it, it's earmarked out. There are certain limits that we have to use that, those funds for. I get it. I understand. But there's so much more out of this $8 million that we can save and not raise your taxes. And I'm the one to sit there and do the work and let you guys know how we can do it without growing this city into another Douglasville or another Carrollton. Thank you.
All right. We have a couple of persons, at least two, here who are concerned about the current crime rate in Villa Rica, stating that it's higher than both state and national averages. And as mayor, what would you do to help police deal with crime? Dominique?
I have a little experience in this. One of my degrees is a criminal justice degree with a concentration in law enforcement. We need to partner with not just, of course, our inner first responders, if you will, the police department, but with our local communities, and even including Atlanta, to see how a whole host of communities are dealing with the crime. One of the reasons, if you don't know, West Georgia is known for meth. Meth is really big in West Georgia, and we are not a safe haven from that. We have to address the problem headfirst. We need to network with local community police departments, as well as our own. We need more training. One of the budgets that was cut is training. I realize for the police department, I realize we have to do wants and need. Respectfully, this is the need. We are here for a reason. We chose that outside, of course, we commute, a bulk of us, to Atlanta, and we appreciate their paycheck, but we come home to the City of Villa Rica for a reason. And that is for peace and quiet and tranquility and the beautification of our home. That will decrease if we do not partner and network with our local first responders, our local police departments, and figure out a way to combat what we're faced with, with the methylene problem that we have. And that requires training. One of the budget cuts was training for our local police department to train outside of Villa Rica. Respectfully, we don't know everything. We need to be proactive instead of reactive.
Atlanta is growing outward at an incredible rate, and with that is the crime. We've all seen it. You know, I, in, in 11 years, it's, it's scary how fast crime has crept into our backyard. Cars being broken into. I think it was a trailer just last week that was stolen right out, out of the Pilot, off of Liberty Road. Now, there's one thing I know best, and I am not a policeman. I can't stand up here and say I ever did anything, you know, with the criminal justice system, but I do know Chief Mansour, and I guarantee you, I will be his biggest cheerleader to fight any crime in here, absolutely full force, whatever he needs, we need to make sure he has it. That's a need. Atlanta growing outwards is, is, you know, we, we talk about growth again. We wanna grow, 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 grow. Well, our crime rate's gonna grow. One is statistics, and two, it's everybody wanting to move out of Atlanta. And with that brings crime. Douglasville has, has opened up that busing system that they so seem to love. It's bringing more crime our direction. We have to support Chief Mansour in any decision that he needs to make sure our roads are safe, our homes are safe. We, he's got my full support. Thank you.
So, let me just say one thing first. There was no cut to the training budget for the police department. Uh, there was a proposal to get additional, uh, city council approval if it were to occur outside the state of Georgia, but that was the only change there. Let me say, I appreciate the work that our police officers do. They work very hard here. They do a great job for us. We are situated on I-20. We are going to have some crime. I mean, it, it's, it's going to happen. We're not going to eliminate all crime. But this police force works very hard every day. They do training, they do partner outside of, of the city with the counties and with the state, uh, to enforce a number of laws across this city. I'm proud of the work they do. I meet regularly with Chief Mansour. I know what they're doing. I know what they have going on down there and the challenges they face. They've done a great job partnering. In fact, we know that we have a problem with 18-wheel traffic on Punkin Town Road. They have partnered with the Motor Carrier Division for the state of Georgia. A couple of times a month, they put about 10 patrol cars on that road to stop as many tractor-trailers as they can. They write a lot of tickets. On the city council, we're still not satisfied. We still push them for even more, because that's a dangerous road to have 18-wheel traffic on. But they are over there working, and they give us back the, the statistics for how many tickets they write. So, I think they're doing a great job with, 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 uh, crime rate in Villa Rica. And you can look at averages, you can look at, uh, different sources, uh, on the internet and find, uh, different numbers, but it, you have to understand the size of city that they're comparing, and what are they using for that? I've seen numbers as high as 80%, but that actually, uh, has to do with every city that reports to the federal government. Our actual number is much closer to about 28%. So, I think we're doing a great job. Thank you.
Okay. And my wife has reminded me that we are drawing close to the end of the question session, and so, uh, we'll, we'll, we will have time for this one more. Villa Rica's traffic problem continues to grow. What can be done to resolve it in a more timely manner? And Michael, would you respond first, please?
Stop the growth. It's only gonna get worse, that's for sure. Um, it, the way to manage what we have now, uh, the, the city planning is, is about roundabouts. Um, gosh, it's gonna be scary. I'll tell you, the first couple of months of roundabouts in Villa Rica, um, I had them when I was, lived out in Massachusetts, when I was out there for Southern New England School of Law. You know, the first time I drove around one, I went around, I think, six times before I actually realized which asset was the right one. The, um, we, we have a hard enough time, you know, with one-way streets, getting, you know, reverse parking figured out. Traffic is a problem. You know, we, we definitely don't wanna make it a bigger issue with adding so much growth into here. Now, we have more infrastructure we have to put with more roads and more taxes to even increase, you know, what we already have. One way to fix it, Gil made a great example, stop the 18-wheelers. Um, with, with what I do, uh, for my work, I, I, I ship tractor-trailers all across the country, and I know that, uh, many, not, none of my tractor-trailers would ever do this, but that's the way to get north without going through Atlanta. It's an easy turnoff, and, you know, you can sneak your way up there as long as you don't get caught, and hopefully Chief Mansour is catching every one of those. But to fix the traffic here, we gotta first and foremost, stop growing. We have enough revenue that we can fix our own issues. We wanna keep the small hometown feel. We definitely don't want to just make this city into another Douglasville or another Carrollton. Thank you.
So, let me just take the roundabouts, just for a moment. The roundabouts are paid for by the state of Georgia after the studies that were done to help us move some of the traffic flow at the end of Punkin Town Road and at Connors Road and, and 78. So, we will welcome those to help move that traffic through. But let me also talk about, uh, traffic as a larger issue. The city council just recently authorized a traffic study. This study would give us a comprehensive understanding of how the city would grow and how to best manage that growth and how to spend our money wisely. I've said before that, in a lot of ways, we don't have the money to do what we need to do, but we certainly don't have the money to do it twice. So, part of what we're doing is making sure that we understand the traffic patterns and the growth, and we're working on that. I, I know that, that there are areas where it's really tough now, but we are working on it, and a plan is in place, and we'll follow through on that. Thank you.
I support the council currently that they are working on a traffic plan, um, to deal with the growth, so I can confer that is what's going on. Uh, respectfully, on Mr. Day pertaining, you've mentioned Douglasville a few times, um, as though they are neglectful with their growth. Uh, realizing that half of our county is Douglasville, so I take offense, 'cause I'm Douglas County. I live in the city of Villa Rica, but I live on Douglas County side, so we have the luxury of uniqueness of paying all host of taxes. Uh, that being said, um, there's nothing that's unrealistic and naive to think that we need to stop growth. Let me emphasize again, we pay our city manager a fair salary and entrusted him to guide us as a city. He has informed us two weeks ago, we need to grow. We did the 2020 budget. It's on City of Villa Rica website. Please read it. We need to grow by 2,100 new residents by 2025, or we will be receiving, as you stated that you dislike, those new taxes. That is our reality. That is what we're dealing with. This is not a facade. We have to be logical and reasonable. We have to grow. The question is, how do we go about the growth? Is it manageable? Who do we bring in? Of course, we don't want more crime. Hence why the bulk of us, it's not all of us, moved here and relocated to the west part of Georgia, for, yes, the small-time, small-town feel, as well as to raise our family in a safe environment. However, we did not move out here to pay more increased taxes. The genie is out of the bottle. We have to grow.
We have concluded the question period, and we're ready to start with the, uh, closing statements. And Gil, you, uh, are drawing the first closer, so we'll go to you first, and then Michael will follow.
Okay. Well, thank you again to everyone for watching tonight, and especially to Dr. Lyons and his wife. I also wanna thank the other two candidates for their interest in serving. When Jeff Reese decided not to seek reelection, I received a number of calls asking me to run. The decision was not easy, but ultimately, I knew the path we were on as a city, and the upcoming decisions that would need to be made were simply too important for me not to consider. Like other mayors before him, anyone who knows Jeff understands he has a true passion and love for this city. So, when he decided to endorse me to become our next mayor, he did so, knowing that I will strive to bring the same level of love, commitment, and ingenuity to lead this community forward. I am grateful for his confidence in me. I am convinced now, more than ever, that your decision for mayor will heavily influence the shape and direction we take over the critical, critical course of the coming years. Cliff's notes and generic ideas are not enough to handle the serious challenges we currently face. I believe my solid tenure of service over the last three years on the council and a lifetime in this community have informed me in such a manner to continue leading this city responsibly. I'm the only candidate who has been alongside our employees when they've uncovered broken water lines, only to discover rust and red clay. I'm the only candidate who has negotiated an SDS agreement, and I'm the only candidate who has experience working with this city council, including commissioners and chairpersons of both Carroll and Douglas County. The people of this city know me. They know I'm serious about the work I do, because I have already demonstrated that commitment in which I will continue as your next mayor. I humbly ask for your vote in partnership to move Villa Rica forward together. Thank you.
Thank you again, uh, for everybody watching, everybody here tonight, and the League of Women Voters of Carrollton, Carroll County, for having us all here. We really appreciate the opportunity to say our voices and say our opinions, so you guys can make a real, honest decision on who will be your next mayor. And when I'm your mayor, I will fight to reduce and maintain taxes. I will fix water issues, and I will keep the hometown feel of Villa Rica. Like I said when we started, I moved my family here so we could raise our son in the same atmosphere, the same hometown feel that I did when I grew up. Fishers, Indiana was a wonderful city to live in and grow in. Villa Rica is a wonderful city to live in and grow in, to raise a family, to work in. We need, we need to come together. We need to fix our issues. We need to figure out what our wants are and what our needs are. I will do that. Thank you again.
Thank you to the League of Women for hosting this debate forum, local media and Villa Rica residents for coming out to participate in this very important election. I am a disabled vet from the United States Marine Corps. I have 16 years as higher education professor. I currently work at Georgia Military College. I'm also a small business owner. I have a home healthcare agency, three years, and Carroll and Douglas is one of the two counties that we do serve. I have experience in a whole host of partnering and collaborating with individuals, corporations, companies, and citizens of all different backgrounds. Early election voting will begin Monday, October 14th, at 7:00 a.m. to November 1st. You can cast your vote for general election on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I'm asking for you to let your voice be heard and vote for myself, Dominique Conte, to be the next mayor of Villa Rica. God bless.
Okay. My thanks to the candidates and to the audience, particularly the audience, for those good questions. We left a bunch on the table that were equally good, and, uh, please remember, we do have another forum scheduled here on Wednesday at the same time, 6:30, for Ward Four candidates. All right? Two in four, or just four?
Four.
Four, just four. Okay, good. We hope to see you all again. Thanks for coming.[1787.21][1787.21]